There you go, now we're recording. Oh my god, I always forget to do that. Thank you for the mind.
Yeah, no reason.
Yeah, again, we're, uh, we're talking, I'm gonna show my screen again. This is the area, uh, PPD, uh, PPD, prep, plan and design, again, like I, um, I've mentioned before, um, and like I said, like I said, we, we talked about five point, uh, five type, the type of items. Now they talk about the actual exam content, the actual, you know, what, uh, was gonna be on the actual exam. Uh, of what you expect. So this division will assess objectives related to the preliminary design of sites and building, right? So this vision will focus on issue related to the generation or evaluation of design alternatives that synthesize environmental, cultural, behavioral, technical and economic issues. So like I said, this exam is very, very broad, right? It's a lot of stuff to cover. So if you, if you're thinking about it in, in terms of a project, you kind of like in the schematic design, uh, with design development, uh, design development, just to manage, it's my design to the, uh, so my design SD to DD set, kind of, that's kind of the phase, that's kind of where you are, not, not quite construction documents, but you definitely in the development, uh, design development where you are making selections, right? You're selecting walls, you're selecting materials, you, you know what kind of, um, a structural system you're gonna have, you know what type of HVAC system you're gonna have, you're dealing with the site, you know? So before you do one, you start, you know, we, you have all that stuff already, already in place, already selected. So that's what this exam is about, you're kind of making these decisions, you know, that's why it's very broad. So it's not like the other exam, uh, PDD, where you're talking more construction documents that we actually have. All the decisions are already made and you actually create a set of documents, like details and all this. So this exam is before you really get to the details. I said, make it this, making, that's why it's very broad and that's why it's very difficult because you have to, you know, you have to know a lot about all the disciplines that are outside of architecture, you know, that you're, you're, you're MEP. So, and you also deal with the site and you have to deal with, you know, environmental conditions as well. Cause like you, you still dealing with that with the DD phase. So that's why this exam makes the exam a little bit more complicated because, because of, because of those. And this is how many items and there's a hundred and twenty items, uh, a hundred and twenty questions is the exam. Uh, and this is the breakdown. So this is the sections of the exam is in case you're not familiar. So section one, I can say environmental conditions, right? This is ten to fifteen, ten to sixteen percent. Codes and regulations are of course doing, you know, this, 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 this phase in your project, you're also dealing with codes, right? You're doing code research. Like I said, those is, well, those decisions are already made in the construction document phase. But here you're still doing code research because that's going to influence your design, right? So you have to make sure you, you know, you, you know, you, you know, you definitely had to study the code book. At least, you know, chapter three, chapter five, chapter 10, you definitely at least have to, I mean, you don't have to memorize the code book, but it's familiar because they're gonna leave, give you a lot of code excerpts on this exam from it. And they actually, you actually have, uh, on the, on the, on the, on the questions at the end, uh, where you, where you, where you, um, where you have your case studies, they're actually gonna, you know, you actually have access to a code book, you know, PDF of the code book, and you can spend a lot of time looking for the code book if you don't know, looking within the code book, if you don't know where, uh, where to look. So you have to make sure, you know, chapter three, you know, you know, uh, chapter five. Uh, I, I mean, there's actually more, but I need, I need, I know chapter three and chapter five and chapter 10, you'll get Egress, uh, classifications and, and building types, uh, are definitely gonna be on the exam. Uh, so, so you can spend a lot of time searching through that PDF, looking for the answer, if you don't know where to look. Also, there's a search feature on the, on the PDF. So you, you know, if you're looking for a specific thing, you can type it in. So don't, don't get too general. I don't put like walls in there, cause that's gonna show like a million, medium, um, like a million, a million, um, searches, but like be more specific. If you're looking for a rated wall, you're looking for a particular thing, the more specific you can get on the search item, uh, the search feature on the PDF, the better. You know, so like I said, just, just knowing the case, you're gonna be hit with a lot of, a lot of code questions. Um, so then, uh, uh, then section three is building materials, building systems, right? There's the MEP stuff, uh, which is, you know, nineteen twenty-five percent. And the biggest section is exam section four, which is planning integration of program assistance, which is kind of like taking the, what you know about MEPs and actually, uh, uh, you know, about your building systems and, and materials and structure and all that stuff, and implement it into a, into a project, into your project. So how would you use that HVAC? How would you, you know, once you selected the HVAC system, now how can you apply it to, to your building? How, how will it be used? Your structural system, how will it be used? All those things, that's why it's a larger section. Those two kind of blend together, three and four is kind of hard to differentiate it to, but, you know, um, one is asking you specifically about the, the building system, another one's asking, asking, asking you, how do you apply it? And then the last session is private costs, you know, budgeting. Like I said, at this time, you're still, uh, in this, you know, in the schematic design DD phase, you're still, uh, doing, uh, you know, you're still doing budgeting, estimating, uh, because obviously you haven't sent it to bit yet. So you're still doing estimating for, um, at the space. So you, you know, you kind of have to do, you know, a little bit of take offs. So you're gonna get a few questions on take offs and, and estimates and stuff like that, but not too much of that. Any questions on the, uh, exam content? Before we move on to the, the actual, uh, practice exam that I sent? Everybody, everybody understands what, what this exam will cover, I'd say. These two, three and four is the biggest, right? The biggest, um, the, the, the two largest sections on the, um, on the exam.
Do these include the case studies that you were talking about?
I'm sorry, what was, what was your question again?
Like, cause you mentioned the case studies at the end, would that just be included in section four?
Yeah, well, okay, so the case study, the case studies integrate all of these. So like, yeah, the case studies are not a particular part of a section. Uh, the case study, I have quite, have, I sense, I'm saying, I want to call them questions that are items because same items is weird. So the questions are, uh, you get in the case that is typically is, you know, uh, twenty, twenty questions typically, or twenty to twenty-five questions in the case study, uh, they, they integrate all of these, so they're all over. You know, and you're gonna get a lot of code questions on there, uh, because they're gonna give you a building and they're gonna ask you what, you know, you know, if, you know, the rated, rated walls questions are gonna ask you, you know, building type questions, they're gonna ask you to calculate, um, occupancy, uh, based on the type, you know, all that stuff is on in the code. They're gonna ask you plumbing questions based on the building type and all that stuff is on the code book, you know? They're gonna, you know, you have to go in the code book and find that table where, you know, you see all the, you know, the, um, the, the building heights and the building, the, uh, minimum square footages in order to, you know, all that stuff based on, on what they gave you. You know, so, yeah, so they're, they're all over the place. Uh, now, one thing I did, which, you know, a lot of people don't do, it's like, I, I, I actually would, we jump to the case study questions first. So like when you get on the exam, you know, you can, uh, tell me what button it is, but you can trigger the button where you can see all the questions, right? All the questions that you have answered. So you can skip down to the case study. I would skip down to the case study questions, who would typically, typically would be like, starting on question one hundred, cause a hundred and twenty questions, right? So we'll go to question one hundred and I will see, you can, you can kind of tell the study questions. And I, I would do the twenty third questions first because to me that would, that, that used to take a lot more, more of my brain power. So like after going to an exam, you know, take, going through a hundred questions, by the time I got to study questions and I had to read and do all that, my brain was like fried. I couldn't, I couldn't think or compute, compete what they were asking. So I would, I would actually do the, 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 uh, the study questions, putting the case study questions first. Knock those out and I should take my break and come back and then handle the other ninety-nine or one hundred questions. Depending how many case study questions, typically it's like between twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two. But I mean, say, it just depends on how your brain works. You don't have to do it that way, but that's something that I, I did and it worked out for me. Because like I said, those questions to me, case studies, you know, you think it's easy because all the information is there, but you have to look for it. And they tend to be more tricky. So like, I'm like, okay, they're not straight, you know, you know, you have to go, you, you know, they give me your answers, um, you have to find the answers based on the case study. You have to read it, make sure you understand what they're asking, and then they give you all this excerpts. It might be maps, it might be site plans, it might be drawings, and then you got the code book in there. So it wasn't, to me, I, that was better, but like I said, it just depends on, on how you work. You know, I would, I would not, I, I used to knock those out first and then go back to the most regular questions after that. Any questions on the content? Alright, so, alright, let's get to, um, let's go ahead and get to the, the discussion questions that I sent out. And hopefully you guys got a chance, um, to look at those. And what I'll do is, I'll, I'll read the questions and, um, I'll go over all the, all the options and then I will give you the answer. And then if you did the, if you did the exam, or if you, if you practiced, then you can check, check it against yours and then that's when we open up for questions. If you have any questions about your answer, why you think it was right compared to mine, you know, obviously we can talk about it, right? So that's kind of how it's gonna work. So you can go ahead and interrupt me at any time when, when, when we're going to the exam, so don't be shy about doing that. So, alright, so we got twelve of these, I think it is, so let's go through them before, yeah, we got about forty minutes, so we can get through it pretty quickly. Uh, in cold climates, right, like kind of where we live, uh, or another bus, vapor barriers are desirable below attic insulation because they, A, minimize moisture migration, B, serve as secondary waterproofing, C, support the insulation, and D, provide, uh, provide protection for insect, infestation. So let's go to the ones that are not correct. So D, obviously is not correct, you know, the, uh, but vapor barriers are not useful to prevent insects from coming in the house. It's still gonna come in no matter what, I mean. Uh, let's see. Uh, C, definitely not, they don't support insulation, that's not what they're there for. Uh, B, serve a secondary, uh, secondary waterproofing or, or A, minimize moisture possession. So obviously, the answer here is A, uh, to minimize moisture protect, moisture migration. Uh, B, that they will not serve a secondary waterproofing. That's, that's not what vapor barriers are for. You know, waterproofing is something completely different, you know, typically used for, you know, under, under foundations, prevent, you know, uh, prevent, uh, moisture from the ground to come in, from coming in, that's what waterproofing is used for. Uh, obviously where you have like a low water table, you gotta do waterproofing or, or damp proofing, uh, but you won't use a vapor barrier for that. Uh, so the obvious answer here is A, to prevent moisture migration. And that's kind of, again, one of the questions that you have to think about when you're in DD phase, right? You started to, uh, uh, create your details and think about how you're gonna protect the envelope and these kind of other questions you get, and the one of the things you have to start thinking about. Any questions on this, uh, on this question here?
Yeah.
Alright. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so is it, so the question specifically asked, in cold climates, vapor barriers are desirable below. Now, is it below because it's on the warm side in a colder climate? It's below the insulation, like closer to the warmer side of the house?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So in cold climates, you always put insulation on the warmer side. Uh, you know, obviously in the south, like I'm from Florida, that would be the opposite, right? Typically, it's warmer most of the time, you get a few, they get like a month of, like I used to live near South Florida, so like this, this never, I was just down there, uh, three days ago, it was, it was like eighty degrees, you know? So I'm supposed to up here. So you always put that, you always put that, uh, so, because the vapor barrier, you always put on the warm side the insulation, so the wall or the roof or whatnot, in, in, in colder, that's why I say, so that's something you have to, this question also gives when, in an environmental question, right? So you have to think about, so it's, it's saying specifically in cold climates. But it's not asking you where you put an insulation at, right? It's just asking you what is, what is used for. So it's like, it's a lot of being thrown in these questions, telling you where it, where, uh, so that's kind of throw you off a little bit, right? So it's telling you it's in a cold climate and it's telling you below the attic insulation, like specifically, it's telling you exactly where it's gonna be. And then, and then kind of like the question you asked, when you're looking at this question, you'd be like, okay, the below attic insulation, that, that will throw you off. So you have to, sometimes you have to look, you have to look at what they're not asking you for, right? You know, they're simply asking you what is the purpose of vapor barrier? Not exactly, not, it has nothing to do with cold climates or, 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 or where it is, even though that's important, but that's not what the question is asking. So like you got, you, that's a, that's a, you have to look, you have to look out in the exam. Um, they will, they will throw stuff, ask stuff in the questions to kind of make you think about other stuff. You know, instead of asking what, you know, instead of the specific thing that they're looking for, you know? So that's, that's a pretty good question that you asked, because I, it kind of brought up the subject, like you were thinking about, you know, where does, where does the vapor ma, vapor barrier go, you know, which was not in the question, but that's something that came up to your head, and you know, you, you would probably just kind of, um, you know, kind of make you think about it. But yeah, that's typically how it is, in the warm side, the, one side of the insulation, uh, and the one side, the one side of the building, one side of the wall. So now if it's in the southern climates, typically, maybe the opposite. Uh, you know, once you get below like Georgia and Florida and, you know, Alabama, some, you know, stuff, states like that typically are warm most of the time. Uh, any other questions on this one? Alright, so let's move on to two. So now this one is one that's interesting, cause you have to do, this one of the ones that could be a quantitative answer, right? They might ask you to actually put in the, right here, you have it in multiple choice format, but they might ask you to do it in, uh, where you actually tap in the answer. You know, because it's a quantity, so it, it, it could be formatted that way in exam. So right here, it, we're talking about a topography question. But this could also be, I've seen it a lot on the questions where they ask you, uh, this have this, uh, ask you to find the elevation point between two, two places, uh, with a pipe, for example. Like, you know, you, they tell you a pipe is coming out of your house that X elevation and then it's gonna run thirty feet to the main line, right, to the, to the drainage line, right? So if you have a drainage, not, not, not a, not septic, obviously your pipe is gonna start up on your house and then, and then drain at a certain slope, you know, down to the drainage line that's thirty feet out on the street, right? So they might ask you if, if elevation A, uh, your house is here, running at this slope, what is the, the, the end elevation at the, at the drainage line? It can be formatted that way too, you know, in here, you know, it's, it's actually talking about the pography, but it's basically the same thing. The math is the same way. So the answer for this one is, is, I'm just gonna tell you is B, seventy-one point two five. And the, the, the way I came up, the, the way I came up, where it's like, you have, you know, you gotta do basic, uh, you gotta find your slope first, right? The slope, cause they're not giving us a slope. They're giving us the distance between the two points and they're giving us the height between the two points, alright? So the height of, um, seventy-five, let me see, do I have my little, um, yeah, I'll take, here you go, I can, around here, I, I can see that. Alright, so obviously seventy-five, you know, over the difference between that, uh, seventy-five and seventy is five feet, right? So you got five over sixteen feet, right? So that's rise over run. So my run is sixteen feet and my rise is five feet, right? So that, that's your, your definition of, uh, of, uh, that, you gotta get this slow first, so you get rise over run. Then my, I'm gonna make a calculator open. I have five over sixteen equals point three, one, two, five. So that's my slope right there, right? So now, if I wanted to get the actual slope, I would multiply that by a hundred, right? Multiply that by a hundred and that will give me, you know, my slope of thirty-one point two, five. That's the actual slope. That's, that's a pretty steep slope, thirty-one point two five, right? That's, that's pretty steep. Right, but that, so that, that, so, but that's not what they're asking you, right? They're asking you for the elevation point at A, where, where, right here. That's what, they're asking you for the elevation point there, not this, not the actual slope. So you have, you have to, um, uh, so, sorry. So, so what you do is, you take it, you take it back, so you don't multiply by a hundred. You just take, take this point three, one, point thirty-one, one thirty-one, two, five, and you multiply it by your spot elevation, wait, by your spot, which is four feet from, from, from seventy, right? So multiply that times four, right, your distance, one, three, one, two, five, times four, which is your distance, and you get, you know, one point two five, right? And you simply just add that to your starting point, right? Because this is, you're going from, from this point to this point, that's what they want to know, the, the, which is four feet. So they want to know what this point here, so you add that to this, to your lowest point, which is seventy, and that gives you seventy-one point two five. So that's how you, you find this, the slope, I mean, at the, so the, the, the elevation point at any particular point. So if, if, if this was eight feet, ten feet, I mean, obviously it's only five feet, that's only, well, you got sixteen feet, that's the, that's the, that's the, that's the, that's the distance, right? So, you know, they have to do, they want to know what is, what distance is at ten feet, what distance is at eight feet. Whatever it is, you would do the same thing. You would just multiply this thirty-one point two five times whatever that distance is. If you wanted to find that, that, that spot elevation and just add it to your initial starting point. And like I said, this could be the same thing with a pipe or anything, where this would be like the, 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 the beginning elevation of the pipe of your house, and this is the finish elevation of the pipe, uh, 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 you know, the contour, and then what, don't you find out what, what is the elevation point of the pipe, you know, uh, at ten feet from your house? Or in this case, they did it with contours, you know, with, with, uh, with topography. So that's kind of how you, how you discover that, uh, how you calculate that. Find the rise over run first, that, that number, the multiplier times the distance you're trying to find, and then add it to the initial starting point, distance, and you get the, the, the spot elevation. Uh, any questions on that? Everybody understand that?
Yep.
Alright, great, awesome. Alright, so let me erase all this stuff and move on to this question. Alright, alright, so. Alright, so next question. Uh, so again, we got, we got a lot of environmental questions here, uh, on this exam. So which of the following is a require, is a requirement of electrical receptacles to be installed in a residential bathroom? Um, so, uh, so A, locate the, locate adjacent to the, to, to the light switch? Uh, not necessarily, it's have to be in the running, so like, not by code anyway. B, installed with a level of toilet or lavatory fixtures? Uh, not necessarily, I mean, it's not, it's not required. Uh, C, include ground fault circuit interrupter or C, uh, uh, GFCIs protection. And then D, locate a minimum of six feet from tuba shower. That's not in the code either. So the, the, the one that's required by code here is, uh, is C, right? So anything that, you know, every time you have electrical receptacles in a, in a, in a bathroom, in a residential bathroom, they have, they have to be GFCI or GFI, uh, GFI or GFCI, um, uh, rated outlets. I think all of you guys know that, right? So that's, you know, that's typically what's required by code and, you know, uh, and in kitchens, you know, if they're within a certain distance of the, of the sink, they have to be GFCI typically. Most of the time, you know, they just make all the, all the ones in the kitchen GFCIs, uh, while on the counter, just, just to be safe. But I think the code specifies a certain distance, I don't know what that is, but typically all the ones in the kitchen are GFCI as well. And although, I mean, all the ones in the, in the counter, anyway, but, um, um, just, just to be safe, but in the, in the restaurants, all of them have to be GFCI. Um, any questions on that one? Straightforward, you know, you guys probably all got that right? With the issues. Alright, so here in nine, I gotta move on to the next question. So now this, this is the environmental question, I think I got this confused. Uh, in the diagram above, which is this diagram right here, uh, of a house in northern hemisphere, right, which is North America and this side of the world, the windows are positioned to achieve the best solar gain as well as sun protection. In what direction are the, are the windows facing, right? So north, south, east or west, right? So, uh, in the diagram above, you know, again, since the sun travels in a what, in a southernly path, right? So this is east, this is west, the sun rises here and it travels in, you know, the axis of the sun. It doesn't matter what the, um, what level above the horizon is, right? Those, and the, the more, the more known you go, the higher it is. Um, so they're not telling you if it's in the winter or the summer, so it doesn't really matter, but the sun will travel in a path kind of like this, right? So obviously all these windows are B facing south, right? Because, you know, depending on the, you know, you see the shade, you know, it's, it's obviously those windows are facing south, not facing north because the north, uh, I believe in the southern hemisphere is the opposite. That's why they have this specific northern hemisphere, because in the southern hemisphere is a complete opposite. The sun travels on a northern path. But up here, on, on, on the upper half of the planet, the sun travels in a southern path, doesn't really matter where you are. And so obviously his windows, based on the shade and the tree position, his windows are facing south. Alright, so any questions on that one? Alright, no, moving, not here now, I'm gonna move to the next one. Alright, so it says here, um, to prevent it from deteriorating, copper should be isolated from direct contact with which of the solid roofing materials, right? So the, A, asphalt shingles, B, red cedar shingles, C, built-up roofing, or D, mineral fiber fels. So this is one of those things that, you know, um, uh, even though the, the materials right here list are not metals, right, and not, they're not metals. Uh, you know, everybody knows that you, you know, uh, for, um, um, you shouldn't have some, you know, if you, if you put certain metals uh, next to each other in a motion environment, it's not great, create rust, right? You got some metals that are more, uh, um, on the, uh, more on the, what is the word I'm looking for? Um, what is, what is the name of that? Everybody know what the name of that is, uh, when you put metals together? Guys, skipping my mind.
Reacting?
I'm sorry?
Galvanic.
Yeah, there you go, galvanic, galvanic action, right? So, but see, now those materials are metal, right? So you're talking about different type of shingles here, you know, so that's something that, you, you know, we always, you know, we, we always think about galvanic action when it comes to metal, you know, zinc and brass or zinc and copper. You know, they have to be on the opposite ends of the, uh, of the, of the spectrum there for them, you know, they're on the opposite end of the spectrum, it's gonna create, it's gonna create a, uh, galvanic action. Um, but here, they talk about red cedar, and they talk about, uh, shingles. And the reason, uh, so the answer to this one is B, red cedar shingles. There's certain woods, certain, uh, and you can see the asphalt, built-up roofing, mineral fels, that all, you know, chemical materials, you know, stuff that's man-made. The only one that's natural here is kind of red cedar, you know, it's come, made from the, from the tree. And there are certain trees, certain types of wood that, that actually cause galvanic action, that you cannot use like certain type of nails within that wood, because he actually creates, um, creates, uh, the, the, the metal to rust, creation nail to rust. And among those is, is, is red cedar. So, okay, so for example, if you do not know, uh, you know, you might not be familiar with the types of woods that create that. So this is, this is a perfect example of, of taking the right guess on the, on the, on the, on a question, right? You might not be familiar with that, cause you've never dealt with that. You might know briefly about galvanic action, but like, I like, I, what, what, you, you, you always think like, whoa, wood always works, you know, uh, with, uh, you might not, you might not know all these sound, that, that, none of these are metals. So you kind of have to isolate the one that kind of stands out. And, and B is the one that was, that, that's, that will stand out because it's different from the other ones. You know, asphalt shingles, built-up roofing, mineral, mineral fiber fels. You know, they're all kind of made from the same thing, you know, they're kind of like typical roofing materials that you will see on buildings. You know, mineral fiber fels, I, I've never really seen that one too much, but, but, you know, uh, but asphalt and build-up roofing, you know, we, we use that, you know, you know, asphalt shingles is used in residential, you know, ninety percent of the, ninety percent of the time, and build-up roofing is very common. But, and then, you know, you know, you got, so red, so the one that stands out to me here is red, red cedar shingles, because, you know, they're different and they're made from a different type of material that might have a, a, that might have a, uh, uh, galvanic action with copper. So like I said, sometimes you just don't know the answer and you kind of have to, you know, because it's not very obvious to you. So you kind of have to eliminate, go by process of elimination and try to select, do the best. Like I mentioned earlier, never leave a question blank, you know, always answer it, because you're still gonna get the same amount of points no matter what, right or wrong. So, um, but you definitely gonna, not gonna get any points if you leave it blank. Uh, so you might as well, and you don't get penalized from, uh, for, you don't take points away for you getting questions wrong. They just don't give you any points. So I would take a guess, and when the guess, you know, sometimes you have to go by process of elimination and, and red cedar, to me, is the one that's, that stands out here the most. You know, I mean, I actually know the answer, but I'm just saying if you actually didn't know, because I actually researched this, because I actually, you know, to put this together. But if you, uh, if you kind of get, guess, uh, which will, it will happen. You know, you got a hundred and twenty questions, you're not gonna know every question, every question, you're gonna have to guess in quite a few of them. And, um, you start to sometimes think up, think about it and, and by process of elimination, kind of, uh, deduct the right answer. You know, so that's kind of why I put this one on here, because it's not very common. Um, any questions on this one right here, on this question? Alright, so here and now, let's move on to, um, uh, uh, which of the following is the most appropriate flash in detail? Uh, uh, which of the following is the most appropriate flashing detail for the, for the design of a brick, uh, brick veneer cavity or wall construction? All right, so, um. So they, they're asking you, they're asking you which one, which one is the, is the, is the appropriate, is, is the, is the most appropriate detail, right? So it's basically asking you, you know, you had to find out where the weep hole is, you know, where the flashing is. You know, is that located in the right location? So in here, you look, you look, let's look at the first one here, right? So you have this one here, you have, you know, you have an angle, uh, supporting a brick. You got the weep hole and it's kind of like the weep hole is, is actually in the angle. You can see the, the water dripping right, right, you know, right through there. You know, so that's obviously not the right location because we calls are used to their water out of the cavity, not water through the cavity, like it's here, right? Uh, it's, let's look at the next one right here. This one could be right. You know, you got, you know, you got the weep hole, you know, this is a dash line here, got cut, cut into the brick, you know, and then, um, but. Uh, the water will fall here and before it gets the weep hole, it will, it will kind of like compound here and accumulate. So that might not be right because it's missing the flashing. So let's look at, there's no flashing here, so let's look at where the flashing is. This one right here. You got the flashing here, but the weep hole is below the flashing, so that fits the purpose of putting the, the flashing. Uh, but you know, having weep holes, if the flash is gonna prevent the water from getting to the weep hole, right? So that, that's not correct. Obviously, the right answer is this one here where you have. A, you had the angle, you had the weep hole in the right location and you got the flashing. Kind of at the same level, right beneath the weep hole, where the water can, you know, come down that cavity. Hit the flashing and then escape to, to the brick and go out, out the wall. So that, this right here, this one right here, I guess, A, B, C, D, and it's no letter, but D will be the right answer. Uh, on, in this situation. And this, this, this question could be the kind of question where they ask you, could be one of those hotspot questions, where they ask you. Where should the weep hole go in this, in this, um, in this detail? So you have to go with your cursor and put it, you know, right here, if you put it right here, what this is. It's obviously gonna be wrong, but if you move your cursor and you click right there, you know, then you're gonna get the right question. So that's gonna, that's, this is an example, could be an example, one of those hotspot questions that you're gonna see. Or they might ask you where the flashing go with a drag and drop question, right? Uh, so, you know, they give you this detail and they give you the, you know, the flashing. And you had to drag it and put it in the right location, right? So you had to drag it and you can be like this guy and put it here, which will be wrong. Uh, but you can, or you can put it right here, which will, will be right. So that, that could be a top, so this could be a multiple choice, I guess, here. A dragon, a hotspot or one of those, uh, drag and drop questions. So just be a lookout for those. Uh, but as soon as you know where stuff is, doesn't really matter what type of question it is, you still will get it right. Any questions on this one? Uh, right, we almost done, but up there, let's see what we got, see if we can get to these quickly. Uh, so again, more environmental questions, right? The sun is, is lowest in the sky in northern hemisphere on the day of. Right? So if you know, you know, the sun is highest on, you know, during the winter. Say again, quick question, northern hemisphere, they're never gonna ask you a question about the southern hemisphere. Like, they're never gonna ask you a question, there's something you're not familiar with, and they're never gonna ask you like a question of in Brazil or in Argentina or in. I know Peru, which everything or Australia, which everything is in the southern hemisphere. And they're not gonna ask you, they're always gonna ask about, you know, what you're familiar with, where you practice, which is America, North America. So that's, so, but key question is that while you study, they might, you might see this southern hemisphere stuff. So that's why they always want to emphasize which hemisphere they're talking about, the way. Then you can recall it that way, you know, when you're studying, because when you study, you're gonna see all, you're gonna see everything. So the sun is lowest in the sky in northern hemisphere, that means the, uh, the, uh, the elevation of the sun of a hemisphere. Uh, during what time? So summer solstice is the longest day of the, of the day of the year, so obviously the sun is the highest on that day, right? So winter solstice is the shortest day of the year. You know, that typically happens around, what, December twenty first, I think it is. So obviously, if, if summer is, is the, is the highest. Then the lowest will be winter, right, because it gets darker quickly, so the answer would be D on this one. The burno equinox, atonal equinox, when it's like the day, the day that where you have, you, the, the year where you have both. There's some amount of hours in the day, some amount of hours in the night. So you got an equal amount of time during the, you know, typically you have, in the summer, you get a little bit more sun. Then you get the, uh, night, night, and the winters, it's obviously a little more night, you get, you get, um. You get darkness, I mean, you get, they get daylight. But the, the equinox, they're kind of almost the same amount of time. Uh, summer solstice, obviously, longest day of the year. Winter solstice, shortest day of the year, as far as daylight, not hours, right? Not actual twenty-four hours, but within twenty-four hours, you get this amount of light versus this amount of darkness. So obviously, winter, winter will be the, when the sun is, is lowest, that, uh, that's the reason why it's the shortest day of the year. All right, and so like I say, you're gonna see a lot of environmental questions on this exam, so you have to, uh, be familiar with those. Any questions on that one? Um, all right, so number eight, which of the following? Basic structural systems will be appropriate for a high-tech building. At, with equipment and functions that are extremely sensitive to vibrations, right? So, uh, let's go with, uh, a choice A, pour in place concrete beam and slab system. B, heavy steel frame with composite floor flat with rubber insulators, okay? C, heavy twelve gauge metal studs with long steel joints with a five inch take concrete slab. And then D, mainstream brain walls with, with joists and, uh, wood deck with a four inch take gypsum concrete top is that. So you got a lot of different, um, different systems there. But, you know, you gotta look at the questions, which is, the question is basic structural system that will be appropriate for. Doesn't matter what high-tech building, it's gonna really matter. I mean, I guess it matters because maybe they require certain things, but it could be any building. With equipment and functions that, you know, that, uh, so that, the, 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 the kick, the, the key three words here, sensitive to vibration. So you're looking for something that is, that is the least sensitive to vibration, that will vibrate less, right? So that's, that's kind of what you have to look, you have to look for. So this whole high-tech equipment and all that stuff, kind of throw you off. You know, um, doesn't really matter if it's equipment that's sensitive, send you, you know, you're just looking for. Uh, the systems are, are less, uh, tend to vibrate, you know, when people, uh, you know, walking and the, uh. Vibration of, uh, equipment, all that stuff makes the building vibrate. So the best answer here is A. Pouring place concrete beam and slab system is the ones that, it's the one that tends to vibrate less. Steel vibrates, obviously, it's, it's steel, it's more flexible, you have a greater level of deflection. So obviously, that, that one, uh, that one would, would vibrate the most. Steel vibrates quite more often, uh, uh, than, than, uh, than many, many systems. You know, the other ones are kind of like, you know, variations of that. Uh, wood joists also vibrates quite a bit because again, it deflects, you know, has more deflection. So concrete, as you know, is good in, is good in, uh, compression, but not good in tension, right? So it's only go, going one way, it's more rigid, which is, you know, it's, it's not flexible steel, as with steel is more flexible, because you can use it in more. In more types of buildings, it still is great in compression and compression and tension, right? So it has a great level of, 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 of deflection, uh, and that's, that's why it vibrates more. Uh, but the good thing it vibrates, but it's still, you know, it's still able to, to keep its structural integrity. Concrete, on the other hand, is not good in tension, it's good in compression. Uh, is, is more rigid than, than steel, it's not flex as much. Uh, and therefore, uh, for, uh, is better for, um. For when you're thinking about, you know, vibrations and the building vibrating, uh, the, uh, pouring place concrete would be a better choice. Uh, uh, on the, in this situation. Any, uh, any questions on that one? Uh, all right, cool. Uh, all right, we almost done here. Uh, number nine, a developer wants to conserve the fifteen story office, again, it's a remodel, uh, well, it does matter. This is a big building, fifteen story office, approximately ten thousand square feet of gross. Uh, per square floor, so that's, that's, that's what you wanna know, what you wanna know, the, the size of the building. Which of the following distribution systems will be, meet the developer's requirements? Uh, maybe most economical in terms of initial costs as well as their operational costs. All right, so you got a different types of, different types of faces here for electrical, um, uh, electrical systems. You know, obviously, we're not electrical engineers, we typically have electrical engineers that do this stuff for us. But, you know, they are a, uh, the in-car folks, things that we need, you know, we need to, we need to know this stuff very well too. So A, one twenty over two way bolt, three phase for wire. B is one twenty over two forty, single face, three wire. And then, uh, C, one twenty over two forty bolt, three face, three wire. And then D, two seventy seven over four eighty, three phase for wire. All right, so the answer here, I'm gonna tell you is D. Uh, reason why is because it is a fairly large building, right? So you have, you have fifteen story building with approximately ten thousand square feet per floor, right? So it's a pretty big building, you know, pretty, pretty high square footage. So the two seventy seven over four, over four eighty, three face, you know, will be the most appropriate, uh, uh, type of, um. Uh, the, the electrical distribution systems, you know, the one twenty with, uh, the one twenty over two oh eight. Is very common, three phase for wire is very common for medium-sized buildings. You know, if you have like a, like a supermarket or, I don't know, like any type of building that's like not, you know, ten thousand square feet per floor. If it was like, if this building was like two-story, uh, that one, one twenty over two way will be the most, most appropriate one. That's the one that, that's who's quite common on one-story buildings, one-story commercial buildings. Typically use a one twenty over two oh eight, three face. Uh, the, um, the one twenty over two forty, single face is, is used for residential houses. What you have in your home is, you know, one twenty over two, two forty, it's a single face. You know, uh, I don't, I don't know if C is made up, three face, I don't know if this one twenty over two forty, three face, three wire. Uh, I'm not sure and I can't remember, but I know B is the one, B is typically used on most residential homes, right? You have the one twenty hours and you got a two forty, you know, used for like the dryer. That's typically is the only, the only electrical, um, everything, everything, everything else operates at one twenty these days. Back in the day, typically your, your stove, your range and your dryer. Will run at two forty, but now all stoves typically run on one twenty now. So typically, the only thing that's left, and I know that runs at two twenty, two forty is the dryer, because like I said, you have an electrical dryer. That still takes a lot of energy, uh, uh, so higher capacity, so you had that one hour that's two forty. Uh, to accommodate that, but everything else is, is on one twenty these days. Um, but, so that's typically used for residential. So A is typical for your typical commercial buildings that are one-story or two-story small. Uh, B is your typical residential. And then D is, uh, for your typical larger buildings, you know, to, you know, your, your, your typical non-industrial. Now, if you got industrial buildings, let's just use higher, higher power, which is not listed here. And I don't know which one, I can't remember what the systems are. Any questions on that? All right, so good, you guys are good, doing great. I would, uh, uh, so again, and then another environmental question, coal climbers, paper bears. I was sorry with lunch session because they, wait a minute, that's a, didn't we do that question already? I, that's a repeat question. That's a repeat, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that. Oh, my goodness, all right, so let's skip that one, sort of repeat. All right, so, um. So, okay, it's one, one of the ones, uh, multiple choice, multiple answers within a choice. Um, so you get, you only get, you only get, if you get three out of the four, you don't get nothing. I see, you have to get all four correct in order to get one point. So like I said, you, this, this question, this sounds are not weighted, you're not gonna get more credit for level of difficulty. They're all, they're all the same. But these are more difficult, but you're not gonna see them as often, um, because, you know, you have to guess, you had, not guess, you had to answer multiple questions. And get them correctly, uh, multiple answers, I mean. Which of the following plumbing fixtures is permitted to connect to a waste stack bin? Check the four that apply, right? So we got, what, six options, so, you know, they, they're never gonna give you five. They're asking you for four, they'll, they'll always give you like two more than what's required, so they're asking you for two, they're gonna give you four. If they ask you for three, they're gonna give you five options, if they ask you for four, they're gonna give you six options. So I'm not gonna make it as easy, where you just eliminate one. But, you know, the way of doing it is by kind of eliminating the ones that you don't think. Um, are obviously in your, in your mind, not correct, right? So just looking at this stuff, which of the following, what are the things permitted to waste stack bin? So we talking about, you know, uh, human waste, right? You know, the, the stack bin is, is connected to the toilet, right, waste stack bin, right? So, uh, which of this, so you talk about, uh, a bedet, obviously, that's, that's one, that's, that, that we're gonna enter waste stack bin. Uh, and then let's see, uh, a stamp pipe. So that's eliminated the ones that, 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 that might not be. So a stamp pipe, obviously, is not gonna be connected to a waste stack bin, because stamp pipe is used to, completely, something completely different, right? You know, so the stamp pipe, the stamp pipe is not gonna be connected to any plumbing fixture. Because typically stamp pipes are used for either, you know, fire, for fire protection typically, right? So that's definitely one, uh, uh, one out of there. And then, uh, I would say out of the bathtub could be connected to a stat bin, because I mean, water. I, you know, you could have waste, you could have waste in a bathtub, but I mean, typically. You know, water, doesn't mean that it's used strictly for, for, for human waste. But water could, could be connected to a stat bin because water flows through there. Obviously, a water closet, that's toilet, that's gonna be there. A laboratory is gonna be connected to that, and a bedet, so that leaves our utility sink. You know, utility sink, you use, they might use that to, you know, uh, dry, wash clothes or something like that. So that might not necessarily need to be connected to, you know, it's no, no, no human. No possible human waste could be going through that. I mean, so out, out of the, out of the six, the two that kind of like, um. Don't kind of belong are utility sink and stamp pipe. Every other ones, you know, laboratory, water closet, obviously, water closet is a toilet, so it obviously is gonna be connected with the waste stack. And then your bathtub and you be dead, they're all gonna be connected to a waste stack bin. So you, you can kind of, if you wanna go by a process of elimination, you can't. Or if you wanna go with the four that makes sense to you, based on what, or based on what you know, you can do that. But either way, but sometimes if you don't know, because like I said, you gotta answer four. Sometimes you know two for sure and the other, the other, the other six, you're not sure. And you're like, oh my God, like, or you might know three for sure, that you're not sure on the fourth one. That's kind of when you go by process of elimination, because like, you like. And trust me, like I say, you're gonna, that, you're gonna see those in the exam, like, you're not gonna know every, every question. No matter how well you studied, they're gonna throw you curveballs in there and you're not gonna know every, every possible answer. All right, so you kind of sometimes have to go by process of elimination. And that's really how you pass the exam, you know, because you're not gonna know everything. Uh, any questions on this, on the, on this particular question here? Uh, no, all right, last question. So, uh, the passage of water under pressure to concrete crack is defined as. Um, A capillary action, B seepage, C saturation and D leakage. Um, you know, you could go with leakage, but that's, that means it's actual, natural opening. So you gotta read the question, the passage of water under pressure to concrete crack. So leakage was not, is necessarily through pressure. It's just a leakage, might be a hole in the concrete, why it's getting through there. Saturation doesn't really apply here, you know, it's not gonna, it's not decided, you know, concrete, concrete is not saturated. You know, seepage, you know, that could be anything, but the, the, the right answer. Uh, which is the, the right term used for this type of thing, uh, when you talk about passage of water through concrete cracks. Uh, is capillary action, you know? So like, you know, concrete tends, uh, you know, even concrete block, you know, tends to be porous. Sometimes, you know, it's a porous material. And you'll see the, the, you know, if you have like a concrete wall or, or, or a, uh, CMU wall that's. That's not properly, um, uh, waterproof or, or painted. You see it, you'll see, uh, see it with top bleeding, right, see water going through it. And, and this is why, you know, so typically you have to, uh, protect the concrete, you know, with, with the, uh, either paint. Uh, or, uh, um, elast, elastomeric paint, or you have to put waterproofing on my side just to prevent that kind of thing. Because, uh, it is porous, it will pour through, through the, through pass, through pressure. Any question on that one, on those questions, or any other questions that we went over? No? All right, so last thing before we go, it's almost one o'clock, I got two more minutes. So again, uh, the best resources for this exam, again, the environmental questions. So site planning design will have a ton of those right there. It's more, it's more of a, as I said, a site planning book with ton of environmental stuff. Uh, architect's to the companion, great, great resource, if you don't have it, you should get this book and it's really hard to pass the exam without it. Because, you know, it, it talks about that, especially for MEP, the different types of systems. What to use at the appropriate, you know, uh, building type, that's what this building is about, right? Making those decisions, which is what this exam is about, right? See, S, D, 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 you start making this decision, okay, what, the type of code? Based on the code, based on budget, based on code, based on the type of building, based on square footage, what is the appropriate systems? The top, the appropriate structural system, appropriate uh MEP, you know, HBC, appropriate lighting, the appropriate um uh, you know, types of walls, based on code, all that stuff is what this book is about. So if you haven't read that book, uh uh you should get a copy. They're pretty cheap on Amazon, and you can probably find copies online uh for free, but that's what this book is about, it's all types of systems, it breaks it down to an architect's level of thinking, not a engineer, engineer level thinking. And building construction illustrated, definitely must must have. Uh these two right here, uh graphic standards and building construction illustrated are great for the next exam, which is uh PDD, because that's more at the detail level. But it's still good to 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 know, because it's still, you know, will show you those details that we, I know, details where stuff go. Uh how to properly uh flash things, how to properly insulate things, they talk about insulation levels, insulation types. You know, all that stuff, all of the, again, decision-making uh that you do at at the SD and DD levels, are on those two books, especially, this, this one right here, so used to this day, Building Construction Illustrated. Um it's a great book, so, but definitely, Architectural Companion, uh get that one. And Building Construction Illustrated, and then for the environmental stuff, Site Planning Design Handbook is very good. I obviously, IBC, I think we up to the twenty eighteen code, I think it is. So live, uh it would tell you, this one says two thousand eighteen, okay, thousand eighteen. Uh when I took it, it was uh uh twenty fifteen that we're using. Um in twenty twenty, when, twenty nineteen, whenever it was, I took the exam, can't remember. Uh there was intense, but now it's twenty eighteen, so you know, I say, you don't have to memorize the book, I mean, nobody's gonna memorize that book, but at least, you know, where to find this stuff, where to find, um where to find, chapter three, you know, chapter five, chapter ten. You're gonna see those questions, um questions related to those chapters pop up in there, sometimes chapter six. Um but uh you should definitely be familiar with the status of where we're looking for, when they give you that book on the on the, on the, on those questions, on the site, on the, on the case of the questions, they're gonna give you a PDF of the IBC. You can quickly go through it and find the answer, you know, so uh definitely uh definitely uh get familiar with it. Um and then
It's the IBC, right, they're not gonna do the Virginia Construction Code for the
No, they're gonna do IBC, everything's IBC. Yeah, they don't, they don't go, they don't go stay by, I mean, the Virginia Construction Code is 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 based on the IBC. You know, but they changed, obviously, a few things for uh related to Virginia. Uh so it's, it's like ninety percent IBC and ten percent Virginia stuff, right? That's what the, that's what the Virginia goes, I mean, actually, might be a little bit different. It's kind of like, you know, every state, a lot of states have their own codebooks, but they're all based on the IBC, because IBC is the model, model, that's why they call it model codebook, right? But for the purposes of this exam, since it's a national exam, they're gonna go with the IBC. And so I will, I will go straight to the IBC to study another Virginia construction code. Um you know, because like I said, stuff in the Virginia construction code might be in different chapters, it might be in a different, you know, it might not, it might not align the same way. You know, even though it might be the same content, but it might be in a different location, and you know, and and uh within the chapter or whatnot, so you definitely want to stick with the IBC. Uh lastly, this, uh any other questions on that?
I was gonna say, thanks, Joel, I appreciate it, I have to drop off.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for coming on, man. Uh if you want me to email you a copy of um uh this, this uh, this presentation will be available on the VANOMA's uh YouTube page. Uh so it's gonna be there, we're gonna post a file right tomorrow. If you want a copy of this exam or this presentation, um um I can email it to you, just let me know in the chat, you know, just stop it in, and then I will, and I, and I will send it to you. Other than that, thank you all for coming, and uh enjoy the rest of your day.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
No problem.